Good evening, welcome to the City Council meeting of September 16th, 2015. Could I have a roll call, please?
Salem Derby.
President.
Dan Hagan.
President.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Here.
Okay, could we please all stand in for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Motion for the approval of the minutes of September 2nd.
Second.
Sorry, motion of second for approval of the minutes, all those in favor. I oppose, any abstentions? None, okay. Public speak time. If there's anyone here from the public who would like to address the council for something other than what's on our public hearings, please come to the podium and state your name. Okay, I guess we can move right on then. So communications from elected officials, boards of committee, we do have communication from the planning board, but Counselor Derby will discuss that communication during his public hearing. There was under correspondence, we did receive a letter from the mayor referencing, we talked last time about creating the, or what already exists, the East Hampton, I mean the Hayden Animal Fund. And the question came up, which part of this fulfills some of the obligation, because I think Counselor Kuzinski was interested in having something written from the teacher mentioning what she wanted the funds to go for and how it was for dogs, et cetera, and which I believe this letter from the mayor, or from Mrs. Wilson, sort of satisfies that requirement. But in general about this fund, it's a little bit, I think, we mentioned it was a little bit outdated, the amount of money appropriate was $50, which in today's dollars seemed a little bit small, it was created back in the 1990s, I think shortly after the city became, or the town became a city. And there's also a lot of references to the select board, so it needs to be cleaned up, but we're not, in the documents referred to as a trust fund, and if it is indeed a trust fund, then it's very specific requirement, so the mayor and I decided to have the document reviewed by the city solicitor, so we're just sure what kind of fund it is, so that is handled appropriately. But, so there are two parts to this, one is that here is, in our packet today is a letter that I think, believe Counselor Kuzinski was interested in seeing from the teacher who was overseeing the students, so that satisfies part of it, and then additional information that we're having investigated to see what it falls into classification-wise, because it depends on how we handle it. So that, that covers that correspondence. So I believe we can move on to standing committees, rules in relation, Counselor Dur, I mean, Counselor Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. We did meet last evening on the administrative code proposal, and we discovered through discussion that it's not simply a name change. We've decided to hold another meeting on it while it is rewritten, and I'll explain that during the public hearing, which I will move to continue at the public hearing. We will hold another meeting on September 29th at 6:00 PM in Room 1, if it's available.
What time?
6:00 PM, to continue this discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure, thank you. Finance, Counselor Hagan.
Yes, the only thing that we still had on our finance agenda was the Kennel donation account, and if I understand what Counselor McCoy is saying, that we want to keep this on the agenda until we get more information on the trust fund part of it, as, as this letter I believe comes from the assistant, I believe she's the assistant principal.
Okay.
But we'll keep it on the agenda until you and the mayor come up with the additional information.
Yeah, and then during the mayor's speak time, we can ask her some of these questions as well.
And there'll be no finance subcommittee, no finance subcommittee meeting next week.
Okay.
Because we don't have any new business.
Great, thank you. I'm glad, I mentioned that, I did skip over mayor communications. Mayor Kager.
Hi, good evening. So as I heard that you were talking about the letter that we did receive, that Counselor Kuzinski had requested regarding the animal control, but I wanted to give you another little update before, in case, you know, we don't discuss that any further, but Deb Smith called me to tell me that, first of all, to make sure that I received the letter, and I did. We received it that night, but it wasn't signed, so when I got downstairs, probably it came, it came through the fax about 7:30 at night, but there was no signature on it, so they recently submitted another one with a signature. But Deb called me just this week, and she was all excited, she goes, "I want to tell you, I finally got around to checking out the Westfield Animal Control Facilities," and she said, "You were right," because Melissa and I had visited them, and she said, "I was so thrilled with the services that they're offering, and the people were so nice," and she said, "But I, before I went, I made sure there wasn't any dogs I wanted on the web, you know, on their, on the website." So after that, when, so she got there and says, "Oh my goodness, was that dog? That dog wasn't there." She left with a dog. She said, so anyway, she picked up the paperwork and the next day she went back and got her dog. So she said it was exactly, and like, she had lost her dog not too long ago, and people tell you, you know, "A dog will find you, don't be looking for a dog," so she said, "The dog found me," so not only am I thrilled, but I now have a dog. So I thought you would like to know that little story. So the other thing that I wanted to mention, it is on your agenda, but we have two gift acceptances tonight, and I think, do you have the picture on the bench?
Yeah.
So I wanted to make sure that you each had a picture of the bench, and if you look close at it, it actually has a little picture of the Mills Building on the seat. So, well, how this happened is recently, two of our East Hampton High School seniors, they won the international award from Marlboro College, and it's Jordan Dermody and Devon Casper, and they had entered into a contest called Beautiful Minds, and what it was, what the contest was, to make something beautiful out of destruction. So you notice the bricks on the side of it, those are the bricks from, you know, one of the, what, at that time, an abandoned building, one of the Mills. I actually think that one's from Ferry Street. And so they were so proud that, you know, they had put together this construction project in, my assistant Nikki and I went and looked at it, and they, they really wanted it to go, you know, someplace nice, and they felt that somewhere along the bike path would be fitting, but, you know, around, along where the Mills are. So I talked to John, and we actually went there at the end of last week and the beginning of this week, to look for a, a good spot, and we found one. It's like, it's right in Millside Park, but it's right at the edge of the park, which is right where the bike path would start, and it's just on a, kind of a grassy area where, you know, it's just a perfect spot for it. So our, because, you know, obviously our concerns are also to protect it.
Yeah.
So John, our Parks and Rec director, said that he would do what I did with the new picnic tables we just bought out there, you know, you chain them and tie them into the ground and anchor them into the ground. So he's, we've already made arrangements for them to get together, and he'll get, put that bench there if the councilor has approved to accept it as a gift. The other thing is it had come to Nick and Betty Dupree's attention, that the Council on Aging has been looking for a passenger vehicle. You know, they have the large handicap accessible vehicle, which by the way, we're on a waiting list for another one. We're, we were able to discover, Melissa did, through PVPC, a really great program where we can actually hopefully get a van, you know, a senior van, the handicap accessible one, the ones that were, typically like we have now, without cost. So the cost is, it takes a year, but versus $70,000, we're waiting the year. So we're, Melissa will be hearing more about it, because she goes to the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority meetings regularly, so she'll get details on when and for sure if we will be receiving it. But in the meantime, they're down a van, so Nikki Dees and Nikki, Nick and Betty wanted to donate this Dodge Caravan, so I hope that the councilors will favorably accept the van. And I think that's all that I wanted to just update under communications, but if you have any questions?
I have a quick question that's came up actually from Counselor Winnie, sharp eyes. I didn't notice that.
Sharp eyes?
Yes. When, or, or my poor eyes, however you look at it. But the plans for the recreation building, they still is set up like with having a bathroom and bathtubs, is that still the plan to have for, do you know, for the new?
Oh, good eye, boy. So are we questioning the bathtub in the, in the parking rec?
Two.
You know, I did not hear of any bathtub in there.
I just saw the cleanse.
Melissa, I was just going to say, right. That's a good question.
Why is there two bathrooms? Two bathrooms.
I, I did ask John about that. It's because it's the standard construction, and so I don't know if he did change it, but it suggests to have it, say, two half baths, because they do need it to be that size for to be able to be wheelchair compliant, but basically it doesn't cost any more or less to put the tub in or out, it's one of those things, it's their standard format.
It's a house, it's a house model.
Right, it's a spec.
It's a house model.
Right, so he's pulled out a lot of the extras, so he may pull out both tubs, but at one point he had had, and I said, "Well, do you, do you need it?" And I, you know, because it seemed silly to me, I said, "Well, are you going to move in? I don't know."
Well, we did have showers on the floor that I'm on here before we moved in, by the way, those were unfortunately removed, but that was for the bathroom purposes.
But, but yeah, it's, it's one of those things that that's how the, the standard layout comes, so it doesn't save him anything to remove them, and it, you know, who knows, it probably costs more not to.
Okay, we figured it was probably that scenario, and I didn't know if there was the option to put in storage or something, if he wanted to, but I was curious.
And I just happened to notice that Jordan is here, the, the maker of the bench, and I don't know if you would at least, you know, would you mind if she came up and just introduced herself, and if you have any questions for her? You know, it's pretty exciting. It was a pleasure meeting you, Jordan.
Congratulations, Jordan.
Thank you, my name is Jordan Dermody, I'm a senior, well, I was a senior at East Hampton High School, and my friend Devon Casper, we actually really didn't know each other before we started our class, and we came together and we decided we want to work on a project, and Ms. Clavellou, our multimedia teacher, suggested this one, and we decided that we were going to read through the prompts, and we thought that looking at the Mills, that would be a great idea, and so we were really excited about it, and we kind of decided we wanted to make a bench, and everyone thought we were crazy, because we have no idea how to make a bench, so my dad helped us, he told us what to do, but he made sure that we did everything ourselves, and then we transferred some pictures onto it, and then finally, we got in contact with the mayor, and we're really excited, and we hope that you guys really like the bench.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
As you requested, I will make a motion now pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53A. Approval is hereby given for the acceptance of the following gifts to the City of East Hampton, donation of a bench created and constructed and donated by Jordan Dermody and Devon Casper.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second to accept the gift of the great award-winning bench, and any additional comments or questions? All those in favor. I oppose, abstain, motion passes.
And a second motion pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53A, approval is hereby given for the acceptance of the following gifts to the City of East Hampton, the donation of a 2005 Dodge Caravan donated by Nick and Betty Dupree of Nikki Dees.
Is there a second for that gift?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to accept the gift from Nick and Betty Dupree of a, of a van for the COA. Additional comments or discussion? All those in favor. I oppose, abstain, motion passes.
Now make the motion to open the public hearings, Mr. President.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second to open public hearings, all those in favor. I oppose, abstain, motion passes. I believe the first one is you, Counselor Rist.
Yes, I will ask that this be continued, and if no one is here to speak to it. We discovered last night while we were discussing the proposed name change, that according to Mass Cultural Regulations, the committee involved, which used to be called the Mass, the East Hampton Cultural Council, and the new name would be the East Hampton City Arts Grants Committee, I'm not sure, I don't have that right, no, it's right here, East Hampton City Arts Grants Committee, would be the same, but they are required to follow the regulations of the state Mass Cultural Agency. Those regulations include, which was discovered by Burns in discussion, Burns Maxey, our city arts coordinator, that the mayor, or the chief, in the law it says the chief officer of the city or town, in this case the mayor, must appoint members to this committee. Previously, there was a lot of confusion, and the East Hampton City Arts Plus Committee appointed members to the committee. So we've asked the mayor and Burns to come up with a new 15-4 that actually creates a new standing committee with details such as the regulations which were already in the Mass Cultural Council, which they must follow, that one member of city arts be appointed to the, to the city arts grants committee, so there's a connection besides just a name, and that way the mayor would be appointing members to it. We're going to try to move this at our first meeting in November, because, yes, that would be, I'm sorry, in October, because there is a deadline in November for the committee to hand out grants, and we want to have the committee established by then. So we're going to try and get it done. The mayor and Burns are going to write new language for the new 15-4, which will actually establish a new committee. I don't know if anybody wants to speak to this, mayor, anybody? No, okay, all right. Do you have any questions?
You should probably ask.
Yeah.
Why ask?
If it's a public forum.
Anybody? It's not public here. Therefore, I will move that we continue this, the administrative code change 15-4 to the next meeting of the City Council.
Second.
A motion of second to continue the public hearing on the administrative code proposal 15-4 to the next meeting, any additional comments or discussion? All those in favor. I oppose, abstain, motion passes. Okay, so I believe in its Counselor Derby for zoning amendments.
Mr. President, what we have in front of us is a proposed change to zoning ordinance for home occupations, which has been considered to be, up to this point, a little burdensome and prohibitive. So we did have public hearings with the planning board, we had our own meetings to discuss this, this was actually brought up from the zoning board of appeals, who felt like they wanted to free themselves from so many people coming to them about home occupations, I believe. I see Assistant Planner Webb is here, so I imagine there can be more enlightenment happening. You know, we did, the, the planning board did vote, you can see in the correspondence that they voted four to zero to approve this. Basically, what this did was it split home occupations into two categories, minor home occupations, major home occupations, and we also kind of clarified some, some language around the use of accessory buildings and how much space could be used for a home occupation. And so I guess I would defer to Assistant Planner Webb on this.
Thank you.
As Counselor Derby said, the zoning board of appeals initiated this process, they felt that the permitting for home occupations was a bit burdensome under the current legislation. If you want to run a home, any, any home-based business needs a special permit, even if you're just doing, you know, typing, web design, something that has no impact on your neighbors, you wouldn't have any employees or people coming to the house. And so they were getting a lot of requests for people to have small home offices, and they felt it was just a unnecessary process that should be handled administratively. So they worked with the planning department to develop the legislation, this proposed ordinance, which basically splits the permitting pathway into two, the minor home occupations, which are the ones that there's no employees, no noise, no odors, no members of the public coming to the house, and is really just a small home office. And then to the other side of it, which was the, the major home occupations, which is everything else, and those would still require a special permit before the zoning board of appeals. What you see in front of you was this then passed to the planning board, went through the city council ordinance subcommittee, and has the full support of the planning department.
Are there any additional questions for Planner? Counselor Rist?
Enforcement of this is under the building inspector, so if a home occupation is approved for a business to, in a residential area, it's approved by special permit, and it suddenly expands where we have lots of trucks and lots of unregulated, the building inspector is the one who would go in and enforce it.
Yes, as with any special permit currently issued by the planning board and zoning board, the zoning enforcement officer is the building commissioner.
Do we have a lot of these businesses already in town? In homes, like, are they just minor homes, businesses?
Yeah, we, we do. You know, we get, I would say, one or two people walk into the office on a, on a monthly basis.
Really?
Inquiring about home occupations, and a small percentage of them actually end up filing. It's really a, most people see the process as being burdensome, and so they're either not, they're, they're operating their businesses illegally, or they are going to other communities to open a business where the permitting is easier.
So you've made this easier, that's the whole point of this, try to make the permitting a little easier?
Yeah, for someone who's running an office out of their house, that, if they live in the house, they have no members of the public coming to the house, they've got no employees, it's really a...
The minor home occupation.
Yeah, and it has no real impact on the neighborhood, so it should be something that with the administrative review could be, could be permitted.
When these are reviewed, abutters are notified that a home occupation is being requested in the neighborhood, correct?
Only if it, only if it would fall under the major home occupation.
Where it has to be a special permit, okay.
Right, and so that currently, all home occupations require that a butter notification.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Counselor Kuzinski?
In reading the items, I'll read the section on minor home occupations, 10-421, 10-421, and may if necessary consult with the city planner or other municipal officials to determine if a proposed home occupation is truly a minor home occupation complying with Section 10.43. Do you really feel a need to include that? I don't, I, I was confused, because you talk about, well, maybe you can go talk to the city planner, or to the zoning inform, or to the other municipal officials, if this is a minor home occupation, to determine if it is, is this a process, a new process? Is there a committee that meets, or is this just, I mean, wouldn't you normally talk to? I'm wondering why it's written here under minor home occupation, but not a specific something that allows the zoning enforcement officer to talk to the city planner and other municipal officials in major occupations?
Look, because the, in the major home occupation, the zoning, the, the building commissioner does not make the decision, the zoning board of appeals makes the decision. So the, the intent is that if you come in, you want to run a business out of your home, and you make your proposal to the building commissioner, and they're unsure that what you're proposing is going to fall in the minor or the major category, they may want to talk to the planning department, they may want to talk to the police chief, they may want to figure out if this is something that's going to need additional permitting, or if it's something that they, that everyone feels is, no, it's really a minor home occupation, and then they should sign it.
Are you done? With that particular question?
Does that answer the...
I guess I, it seemed, it seemed unnecessary to me, it seemed like if the zoning enforcement person felt that they needed to talk to the city planner or other municipal officials, they just would. But if nobody else has any questions about that, I'd leave that one.
Counselor Rist? I just want to know who the CEO is, that's the building inspector?
Yeah, the zoning enforcement officer is defined in the zoning ordinance as the building commissioner.
Okay, good.
I would like to try to better understand gross floor area from living, living square feet in the definition of, the calculation of allowable space, and I guess the standard is that no more than 33% of existing gross floor area of the residential unit shall be devoted to the home occupation, I'm looking at 10-432. What do you consider gross floor area, is that attic and basement and living area, such as first and second floor, or is that just? It's important.
My, my understanding of gross floor area is the, the entire floor area of the building, it's not the livable space.
Right. I, it would seem to make sense, and I think that expands the criteria, not just your living area, but the gross floor area, and you should be able to count if it's a full attic, or if it's a full basement. I'm imagining a three-story home, a colonial, and if you're calculating the three levels at 1,000 square feet apiece, let's say, so you have 3,000 total square feet, presumably you could use your entire one level of the house for business, for the home occupation purposes.
Correct.
Just to clarify, that, that particular piece was something that we spent quite a bit of time on, and in fact, we even, the planning department so graciously looked into this very deeply, and came back and told us what all of our surrounding neighbors had as their requirement, as, so it's interesting to, to know that the model home-based business zoning bylaw defines it as 33% of the max gross floor area. Deerfield does 30%, Greenfield does 50%, Hadley does 40%, Southampton does 40%, Southampton 25%, Westfield 33, and West Hampton 40. So those are the, the notes, so we're, you know, before we were way low, you know, we were 25% and maxed at 300, and so what we wanted to do is we wanted to make it this more in line with, you know, what the model ordinance was and what our neighbors were.
How would this apply if there was, let's say, a large barn in the backyard? And that wouldn't be part of the gross floor area of the building, but let's say they had a 2,000-square-foot barn.
So, I mean, the, the ordinance says that the one-third of the gross floor area of the residential space, regardless of the, whether the use is carried on in the residential unit or in the accessory.
So in the example, we talked about the whole other, other structure couldn't be used, you could only use 1,000 square feet in that structure.
Correct.
According to the 33% standard.
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Hagan?
Under 10-436, there's a two-foot square area of signs, and signs always become a problem. Is this, is there any requirement that the sign has to be by the road, or can it be like on an accessory building, or is there no, I mean, anywhere the person wants to put it, as long as it's two square feet? I mean, I just don't know if that ever came up, the sign, only because we always seem to have problems down along the sides. I was wondering if there was any discussion about where that sign would have to be, or could it be on an accessory building, sort of setting it aside as like a, in other words, like, there's the business type thing in a residential area, like the, you get what I'm saying, like, and make it look like that's just a business here in a residential unit, in a residential neighborhood, as opposed to being by the road where it just says there's a home.
This provision was actually carried through from the, the current ordinance, and would tie into the existing sign ordinance, so where you only, in the sign ordinance, you're only allowed a small, two-square-foot sign. If you have a home occupation, this is really just referencing, cross-referencing that, and if there's other regulations in the sign ordinance as to where that sign can be, that's where that would play in.
Sure there's something in there somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, this would probably be...
Right, no, I know it's a very small sign.
So if, if it was, if it was a standalone, it would probably look a little silly. I imagine it would be like a placard.
Right, like, you go by a lot of homes and you see the little sign out front, like, that says whatever.
Joe's Go Cheese.
Right.
Counselor Hayes?
Is there a fee associated with this application?
Special permits before the zoning board of appeals have a application fee, as well as a butter notification fee. There's currently no fee set for a minor home occupation. If there was a need to do that, I, I don't know how that would be set, or where would that, how that process would begin, but it wouldn't be part of the ordinance itself.
Okay, any additional? Counselor, sorry, sorry, Counselor Rist first, Counselor Rist?
I just want to say that I don't think a fee for minor home occupation is necessary. We're trying to streamline it and make it a little easier for them to establish a small business in a home. They don't need a fee if it's just the zoning board, the zoning enforcement officer making the decision. In the special permitting process, there's a lot of people that have to deal with it, and there's a lot of hoops they have to go through, but that's for a major home occupation.
I, I agree.
Counselor Kuzinski, do you have a question?
Just a clarification of 10-451. It refers to major home occupations having a set of standards, minor home occupations having another set of standards, and saying, and then the wording is, "In case of a conflict, the stricter standard shall apply." Can anyone see an attorney say, well, geez, the stricter standard is one employee, so you have to have one employee. In a major occupation, but yet we are allowing two specifically in the language. And...
So where does it say one?
So it says, under ten four three, the standard is you can have one employee in a... Where was that, the previous standard? Sorry about that. My, my, my misinterpretation. I think I'm clear on that one. No other questions?
Any one else for Assistant Planner? No, I don't think.
I have one other, just to, so everybody can rest easy. If anybody is going to have a, a business that has radioactive, toxic, corrosive chemicals, that's going to be a major home occupation, and we'll have to go under strict scrutiny.
Even if they're doing it by themselves?
Even if they're doing it by themselves.
I'd like to know about that if I'm in a butter. I really would.
That's a major, major home occupation.
Thank you very much. I think that's all your questions.
Thank you.
So anyone here from the public who would like to address counsel considering this proposal? Okay, back to you, Counselor Derby.
Okay, I would like to move to amend the East Hampton zoning ordinance in regards to home occupation, section ten point four, as well as related amendments to section two definitions in table five dash one, tables of uses in accordance with the planning board recommendation dated September first, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Okay, we have motion a second to amend the East Hampton zoning ordinance over section ten four, as well as related amendments, section two, table five.
Question for Counselor Derby, if I may?
Yeah, sure.
In the discussions about thirty-three, you said thirty-three percent, and some, some communities have forty percent, and you said Greenfield has fifty percent.
Greenfield does have fifty percent.
How did, could you elaborate a little more how, I mean, obviously we increased it from the twenty-five and the three hundred square foot maximum? Twenty-five percent and three hundred square foot maximum, and that's a great thing, but how did we, can you tell us a little bit more about the thirty-three percent as opposed to forty percent?
Um, it was, you know, it basically became a discussion between the ordinance subcommittee and the planning board, and that was what we all kind of came as a consensus to, you know, not going from twenty-five to fifty and, but not staying so restrictive. And, and since it was what is in the model, um, home business zoning, we thought that that, you know, would make sense, and it puts us right up there with the other communities that are close to us. So that was the rationale.
Thank you. Initial questions, Counselor Riss?
Just a comment. I appreciate this kind of work done by the ordinance committee and the planning board and the request of the zoning board, because it shows us once again that we're trying to streamline business permitting, and I like that. We need to be as business-friendly, not only in reality, but in perception, and this helps that, so, thank you.
And businesses are constantly changing, you know?
A lot of home.
Whole different...
And more and more people are having home businesses.
Yeah, so we already have a second, so we're just ready for the vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Move that the public hearings be closed?
Second.
Motion a second to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. I believe we got through, yeah, fine, so Public Safety, Counselor Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the request for street acceptance for the Paul Street extension, we did a site visit with Jim Gracia, we had a meeting last night about this, and this has been going on for quite a while, since like two thousand and eleven, and there were about nine waivers that were given by the planning board at that point. And we tried to go through, and we just couldn't follow back what some of these waivers related to. So there wasn't, there isn't a way for us to make a determination right now, so what I'd like to do is actually send this back to planning and see if they can kind of reverse engineer. There's, there's some questions about who's going to be responsible for taking care of this cul-de-sac. There's, there's no clear body represented there. There's also some waivers where they were had, said that they could do con, uh, tar berms instead of like the granite sidewalk, but they've gotten pretty chewed up since then. I mean, this road's been used. There's also a lot of construction that still seems to be happening, which wouldn't necessarily hold up a street acceptance, but we're not quite sure exactly what's going on, so it doesn't look like it's ready, so we're going to send it back to planning.
Okay, and so the city engineer was in accordance with, with you as well, that there seems to be things...
Yeah, he, usually, Jim's usually great, and he can say, oh, it's this, it's that, but there were just too many, we just didn't have answers.
Okay, Counselor Riss?
So does that mean you would like to send this back to planning and remove it from the agenda of the council?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
So that's a motion. So you need to...
In the form of a motion. So yes, we'd like to move this up the agenda and back to the planning department.
Second.
Without prejudice.
So motion a second to, without prejudice, to move the, uh, the Paul Street extension back to planning board for further clarification. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
So our next agenda item is the review of the street acceptance protocol, and we met about that last night. It did go to the planning board. We've got a lot of really great notes from the planning department, and the planning board would like to wait to weigh in on it until we've made some more edits. But at this point, I would actually like to loop in Counselor Riss. We had a discussion about whether or not this would be part of city council policy and procedures or an ordinance, and what we're trying to do with this is get more roads accepted for the city to increase the amount of money we get from chapter ninety funds, which would then go towards helping with, you know, potholes and street repairs. So we're trying to make this process not income gen, uh, losing for the city, because right now we pay to have an attorney do the acceptance. We sometimes are sending out our plows, our street sweepers, our sanders, and we're trying to institute fees for the property owners when we take care of those tasks for them, to kind of get reimbursed. So after a conversation with Counselor Riss, it seems like this would probably be better as an ordinance, and we need to talk about whether or not we do something as a performance guarantee with the property owner, or if we do a bond. So there's a couple of legislative policy kind of questions we need to handle with this, so that's our next move.
The city planner would be key, and city engineer would be key.
Yep, we've got her, we've got her input, so...
Counselor Riss?
I just wanted to make sure people understood that Counselor Hayes asked me about making it a council rule or procedure, and that rules and procedures are designed to guide and direct the council in dealing with any measure that comes before us. This particular situation, as I hope it will end up with some kind of a performance bond, so that streets don't languor forever and not get accepted. If there's money on the table, these developers will work to get the street accepted, so they get their bond back. And anytime we're going to associate fees or anything like that in an ordinance, it, I mean, it must be an ordinance. It must be a law that they have to do it. And of course, special permitting processes over the years have, have had bonds and performance guarantees, and have not. What I think Counselor Hayes is alluding to is that she would like to make this a permanent decision, or maybe that's what will end up being the case. But in, in, no matter what it's done, it has to be an ordinance if we want developers to follow whatever we write down. Procedures for the council and how we accept streets, that of course can be defined for us, but that's a separate subject. And I don't know if we need more than that.
Yeah, and I thought that was just a really great point, so I will cordially invite you to our next meeting to discuss further.
I'd be happy to come, because that's a, for me, it's been too long since, it kicked forever to get streets accepted. And what Counselor Hayes pointed out rightly is that chapter ninety funds are based on the amount of miles we have. And those miles don't include the streets we have to plow, because the taxpayers who live there expect us, because they're allowed to occupy the homes and they pay taxes on their homes, but we have to clean the streets, we have to do what we've normally done on an accepted street. But the mileage isn't included when we send it to the state for chapter ninety funds. So I don't know how much that is. It may not be much money, but it is money that we're losing out on, so.
And it's, it's kind of interesting to have it running parallel with this Paul Street extension, because all of the questions we're running into with not being able to accept Paul Street extension would have been handled by the time it reaches city council if we had a street acceptance protocol in place.
There you go.
And then I'd like to move these two utility requests on Brook Street for the conduit location, the one pole location, to Public Safety.
Okay, a motion and a second to move under new business, the two utility requests on Brook Street, conduit and one pole location, to Public Safety. Additional comments, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Thus concludes.
Okay, thank you very much. Appointments, Counselor Winnie?
Thank you. Um, we had no meeting, but we do have a new appointment that was put into our packet. So I will make the motion that we move the appointment of Kevin Mathers for the Manhand Rail Trail Committee down to our Appointment Subcommittee.
Second. Motion a second to move to appointments, Kevin Mathers for the Manhand Rail Trail Committee. Additional comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be October seventh at five thirty downstairs in the bottom floor for the review of this appointment. And other than that, I have nothing else to report on, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance, Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, our next meeting is going to be next Wednesday, September twenty-third, at seven-ten, in conference room one.
So I need to, that concludes. Okay, thank you. Um, you know, I just, okay, never mind. Zig, Jesus.
Zebra.
Property, Counselor Ziegler.
Thank you, Mr. President. The property subcommittee met this evening to discuss the easement request for Fifteen Cottage Street, the pedestrian bridge. Back on July twenty-ninth, I believe the council received a request to consider a bridge that would extend from the, the building on Fifteen Cottage Street and join the downtown district area for the shops, services, and amenities. We have an easement map that was provided. It had been reviewed and approved by the city solicitor. And then this evening, we met prior to tonight's meeting to go over the easement request, and there was some discussion again on what was actually shown in the map, and some of it is actually a retaining wall. It's not a, a large sidewalk or area extending beyond the, the sidewalk area. We did approve to move it forward to a vote with three to zero, and I believe the petitioner is here also to answer any questions.
Okay, this isn't a public hearing. Yeah, but, sure, I, so if, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, so if you'd like to come up and interest yourself, you're the counselor.
We can have Rich Relic with Archie Developments. We developed Fifteen Cottage Street Cottage Square Apartments. And if you have any questions on the, the bridge, and we discussed it at the property subcommittee tonight, and it'd be a great connection to the downtown for residents. We've always planned on doing it. We had a little hiccup when we found out that that's, the backside of the street there was actually part of the, um, the dam, which required us to go to the Office of Dam Safety and provide structural calculations. We hired Ty and Bond, who had done the work for the city on the, on the, on the promenade area. So they were familiar with it, and then they were able to talk to Office of Dam Safety, get that approved, and we were back on with our, with our easement.
Since you're here, does anyone else have any questions at this point for, Ms. Riss? Okay, well, thank you very much, Ty. I'm sure there'll be more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the, the project, again, in, in review, it is handicapped accessible with the ramp. There are stairs. And there were some, some questions or concerns regarding the, the materials to be used in the construction and whether or not it would tie into the, uh, the likes of the promenade and surrounding area. We don't have a picture of what it's actually proposed to look like, but again, it is a footbridge, and we do have the actual measurements and where it's going to be. So for the purposes of the, absolutely. For the purposes of the easement, again, it was approved by John Fitzgibbons and also, again, the, the city solicitor.
So it require a public hearing?
No, it doesn't.
No.
And there's, on the map, it's one inch equals ten feet, and then there's enlargement in the upper right-hand corner, where I believe one inch equals five feet.
Counselor Riss?
I, I don't have any objection to this, although I am concerned that the counselors, all of the counselors didn't get a picture of this. Oh, we do have it. Never mind. I'm sorry. See, the clerk is on top of everything, and I'm not. Okay.
This is the one on one eighty.
Right, and there was some, you can also pass a picture of what the footbridge on one eighty looks like. That's all steel construction, if anybody knows.
It's aluminum.
Oh, look at that.
Aluminium.
All metal construction.
Is that what you're doing?
It's similar to that. It's not all aluminum. It's a combination of wood and steel.
Don't swipe left.
Just so you know, that's on Pleasant Street, one eighty mile.
Probably a car.
That's on Pleasant Street?
That's on Pleasant Street, yeah.
That's beautiful.
Oh, that's nice. I like that.
Yeah, they're, they're doing some great stuff.
So there's no further questions?
I did have a, just one, one clarification. I was the one who raised lots of questions about the quality, the...
Sorry, sorry if you don't mind coming back.
The, the material that you were using, and I saw a vision of our downtown tying in across the street from the promenade, where we have a, a metal fence, for the most part. Is the fence itself metal and the wood on the footbridge part, or?
The, the footbridge is wood, and the footbridge would be wood, and the railings are basically a combination of wood and steel.
Okay.
It should, it'll be similar, it's not exactly the same design, but similar, it should tie in. I think that's an E-Pay wood on, on the deck, and it's an E-Pay wood that we proposed on the footbridge, too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Counselor Hayes?
What about the sidewalk that's on that side of the street? That's us. Does, that's us? Does that get, I mean, what about that entrance, though? Is that going to be more of a platform? I mean, that's a really, really narrow area.
I know what you're talking about. You're talking about when the bridge meets with the sidewalk, the width of the sidewalk?
Yeah, I mean, I'm afraid that rock, walkway is just going to be dumping people right into Cottage Street. I mean, is there enough of a platform there?
There's stairs.
There's stairs.
There's stairs that go down. So the pla, the platform doesn't go straight to the sidewalk?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so there's, there'll be a little entrance with stairs to the walkway.
And it'll look safe?
Yeah.
Okay.
How's that going to be handicapped accessible?
Well, there's a ramp and there's...
A ramp, oh, okay.
On the other side.
Cool, great.
Thank you. Any additional questions? I hate to have you going up and down.
Always happy.
I believe you're safe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Ziegler, I believe.
So without any further questions, it is my understanding that everyone, and I'm sure the clerk did provide everybody a copy of the, the easement back on July twenty-ninth. But I, I moved to approve the easement agreement between the City of East Hampton and Cottage Square Apartments Limited Partnership to grant an easement to said Cottage Square Apartments Limited Partnership and to accept an easement from said Limited Partnership, all for the purpose of the construction of a pedestrian bridge with supporting infrastructure extending from the southerly side of the building on the Cottage Square property to Cottage Street as described in said agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion a second for, to accept the easement request for Fifteen Cottage Street Pedestrian Bridge. Any additional comments or questions from what we've already had? Not saying any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. Does that conclude property, Counselor Ziegler, I assume? Okay, old business pending. Mayor and I are continuing to work on assembling the boardwalk gaming group, so that will be continuing. And I believe that, uh...
Move to adjourn?
No, I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I just want to take a, a minute or two to, um, to send our sympathy out to the Sparko family. East Hampton on September fourteenth lost one of our Centurions, Walter Sparko, who was a employee and retired from our East Hampton wastewater treatment plant in nineteen seventy-seven. His son, Ed Sparko, was one of our original city counselors. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to just recognize that East Hampton has lost one of their one-hundred-year-old Centurions and, um, and to send our condolences out to the family. Thank you.
Well deserved. Thank you for that thoughts.
So now I'll move to adjourn?
Second. So a motion a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
Guess what? We don't have to say anything. You do.